For the chair, once we elect a new chair, then we will go to the chair. Also, before we open the meeting, if there's any amendments to the agenda, you announce it before the meeting, I do need to amend the agenda to include under reorganization of the board, the BSC authorization of the superintendent to sign contracts, and I'll read, it's a, it's occurs every year, it allows me to sign contracts. Or instead Renee here, I'll let her read that language when we, so I'm asking the board to vote to amend the agenda to include a C under reorganization. I move, it's what?
I think it's A.
Procedure for executing contracts, it's there?
Yeah.
So it was last night's meeting that wasn't on the agenda?
It was there, but they took action to just honor it as the chair.
All right, so we don't need to do that tonight, so we do not need to amend it. Renee is here. So then I will open the meeting, we all stand. Pledge of allegiance. Good evening, everyone, I am Superintendent Jim Colke. Welcome to the Southwest Vermont Union Elementary School District Board of Directions Meeting, Tuesday, May 21st, 2023. At this time, I ask for nominations for the position of board chair. Any nominations?
I nominate Chris Murphy.
Sandy nominates Chris Murphy, is there a second? Scott is seconded. Are there any other nominations for the board chair? Are there any other nominations for the board chair? Hearing none, I will close the nominations and ask, all in favor of Chris Murphy being the chair of this board, say aye.
Aye.
Are there anyone opposed? Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, is there anybody who wishes to abstain? It seems like you were narrowly elected to be the chair, and it is your meeting.
Well, thanks, everyone, thank you very much. I would entertain nominations for vice chair of the board, please.
I nominate Scott McEnany.
Very good, is there a second for that nomination?
A second.
Scott, do you accept the nomination? Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none, all those in favor of electing Scott McEnany as vice chair of this board can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. And I would also entertain a motion to nominate, I'm sorry, entertain nominations for clerk of this board, please.
I nominate Jeff Lee.
Thank you very much, is there a second for that nomination?
A second.
Thank you, Sandy, Jeff, would you accept the nomination?
I'll accept the nomination.
Very good, are there any other nominations for clerk of the board? Are there any other nominations for clerk of the board? Are there any other nominations for clerk of the board? That has to do with Robert Scholz's board, as far as I understand, you have to ask three times, even though I'm certain you all heard me the first two times. So hearing no other nominations, the nominations are now closed. All those in favor of electing Jeff Lee as clerk of the board can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, very good, the election passes, thank you. The other two items underneath the reorganization of the board is that we need to authorize the superintendent to execute contracts and the manager to heed this describing to elect your representatives to the issue. Oh, yes, thanks, we'll do that as well. Continuing from what we had before, Director Gordon, the superintendent indicated that you had language to read to us regarding authorizing the superintendent to execute contracts, would you present that to the board, please?
Right, so per statute, the responsibility lies with the board unless otherwise noted. So after the board reorganizes every year, we ask for a motion to authorize the superintendent or his or her designee to execute on behalf of the school district, purchase orders, agreements for consulting services, grant agreements, and any other contracts arising affecting the routine operation of the SVU VSE. The superintendent or designee shall not execute any contracts resulting from a public bid process, any employment agreements, and any long-term contracts without express authority from the board.
So first, I would ask, do any board members have any questions of Director Gordon about what you just outlined? Okay, so in that case, I would entertain a motion to authorize the superintendent in the manner described by Director Gordon, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Scott, could I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Sandy, any further discussion on authorizing the superintendent in the manner described? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, thank you. We also need to authorize the chair and/or the vice chair to approve off-cycle warrants, which is what happens when we're not all meeting together, but still the bills need to be paid. So I would entertain a motion to authorize the chair and vice chair to approve off-cycle warrants, please.
I'll authorize the chair and vice chair, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff, do you have a second for that, please?
Second.
Thank you, so we have a first and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, and that carries as well. So we have a few other appointments and elections to do, superintendent pointed out, we need to elect two rep representatives to the supervisory union. Yes, VSE, is it free? Thank you. There are also subcommittee assignments that need to be appointed, and we have a vacancy, we have a board vacancy. We have, the representation on this board is allocated by town, but they're voted, voted on as an at-large basis, and we have a vacancy from panel. So Title 16 of Vermont statutes outline what we need to do. What we need to do is within five days is to notify the select board of panel. In fact, clerk is the one identified to do that. So Jeff, if you wouldn't mind, please reaching out to the select board in panel, letting them know that we have a vacancy for one seat from panel, it's a three-year term. And it's my reading of the law that they don't get to make the decision, but they do get to put forth some names.
That's correct.
Yeah, and that's just, this makes the determination. And so for any of us who may live in panel or have friends in panel, if you know someone who you think would be interested in serving this capacity, they do not have to run, this is an appointed position. If they wanted to serve again after those three years enough, they would need to run.
You're appointed for three years or one year?
One.
One year.
Okay, thank you.
Until the next regular scheduled location.
Yes, there we have it. So if you would take care of that, please, Jeff?
Yeah.
Thank you. And also, we need to elect three representatives to the SVU. Scott, would you mind just giving a quick outline of what those duties entail?
Well, it's a monthly meeting, similar to these, hosted in the same location. You're there as a representative of the board that appoints you, and then with that, it's a lot of the, Jim, correct me if I get this, it's the oversight, it's the board that also encompasses Arlington, Sandgate, all of those members come together, and it's the oversight of the SU as opposed to just the elementary district or the mountain district.
And non-operating North Bennington is also represented on the issue.
There's a seat for North Bennington on that board as well. Similar time requirement when you think of the meetings and/or committees, but it's been, it's been a good experience for me too, because you're interacting with even more folks across the supervisor unions, more than just the folks we get to meet.
They mentioned the same videos last night, so apologize for that, but as you said, we, it's not that we've been hacked as much as it would've been Zoom-bonged is the term.
Jim, it would, if we could get guidance sooner rather than later, please, from the tech people on how to keep online participants muted and just keep them from screen sharing, that would be appreciated, and I, I don't, I don't quite have the words for what I believe just experienced.
And actually, the problem is if we mute, we had this, when we were having the problem when we first got to go to Zoom meetings, but then everyone is muted, and I have to like unlock their mics when they go, so I mean, I'm gonna see, I'm gonna go to security bike and try that.
Yeah, and I would be, even though that's, that's a pain, I would much rather have that than have it with just our parents. So to everyone here and everyone watching on the line, I'm very sorry that happened.
I can see, like, I have a name in the waiting room right now that I don't recognize, Kayden Wise, I think what the man would have to ask them immediately who they are, and that, because they have a right to be here, but, so. Kayden Wise, can you identify yourself, please? Answer, so I'll continue that if someone comes in. You did say it was public comment.
We weren't there yet, so we were discussing the duties of the VSE reps.
Sorry, I jumped in.
Yep, no, so Scott had outlined those. It's an important function of this board to have representation on the wider supervisory union board. I suppose I would first ask, are there any volunteers?
Policies too, policies is a big, big part of the SU board's role of policies.
Yep. So are there any volunteers to represent this board on the SU?
I'll stay on.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Sure, I'm volunteer.
Okay, so we have.
Susan was your representative.
Susan was the other rep, it seems like we have lots of volunteers to choose from. So of the four volunteers, anyone willing to take a step back?
I don't mind.
Okay, in that case, we'll call it Kristel, Scott, and Jeff. Those are the nominees for the SU reps, considering they are elected, and we will, I would first entertain a motion to elect our SU reps by slate as opposed by individuals. Anyone care to make that motion? Thanks, Sandy, I was hoping you were. Is there a second for the motion to elect these reps by slate? Thank you, Claire, any discussion about electing them by slate? Hearing none, all those in favor of electing those three nominees to the SU, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, there we go, thank you very much, the three, for being willing to turn. So that brings us to committee assignments, I believe, and Jim, please correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're at a point where we don't have any negotiations this year.
Do you have negotiations with the support staff, which you'll need somebody to?
Which I'm doing, yeah, I'm already doing.
And negotiations with administration principals, which is wrapping up, wrapping up, and Sandy's doing that.
Yeah, so I think we're set, so that's nice. So what that leaves are the food advisory committee and the facilities committee. And I'm gonna, I will remain on policy committee. So are there, is there anyone interested in serving, and I don't need an answer now necessarily, you can let me know afterwards or outside of the meeting, but serve both the food advisory and the facilities committee, there isn't any.
When they?
I'm not even sure, I'm not sure when they're meeting.
It's service, right now, we're meeting usually three to four times a year because we're not in the bid cycle. We just awarded the food service management contract, so we're in year one of what potentially will be a five-year contract, so orderly. We have been meeting here, and usually they have bigger points, treats, so if that's incentive.
Okay, great, Sandy called it, Sandy's on the food committee, so that leaves the facilities committee, and I'm not sure the manner in which Holly is running those or what she has in mind, but we can talk about that at a later point. So I think that wraps up the reorganization of the board. We obviously have two new board members, but we'll chat with them a little bit further along in the meeting. That brings us to agenda item three, which is public comments. So if anyone does that public comment, because our minute taker is not present, I would ask you to identify yourself by name and the town you live in, please, if anyone has any public comment.
I have public comment.
Please.
My name is Ashley Brennan Jowett, I live in Bennington, I am the mom of two Bennington elementary students. In January, my son came home from school and told me that his classroom had to be reorganized because there was a leak in the ceiling of his classroom. And I had faith that, you know, he would tell the people that needed to know and that it would be fixed. Then in February, we went to a candidate forum to meet with Benell and just to talk about Benell and what Benell needs, and the most pressing thing on my son's mind was the leak in the ceiling of his classroom, which had not been repaired throughout that month. Yesterday, I spoke with my son's teacher on another matter. I learned that the leak has been a problem for over a year, that she now has a 50-gallon trash can in the center of her already crowded classroom. And I learned that her classroom is not the only one affected, two others on the second floor also have leaks in their ceilings. I hope there's an immediate plan to fix Benell's roof permanently and durably, but my question is, why don't we know about it already? Why doesn't the teacher know about it and trust it? Why don't the parents and students know about that plan? I want everybody to just imagine what it might be like to have a leak in the ceiling of your workspace for a year, and send your kid into a classroom for six hours a day with a leak in the ceiling. I wanna, I wanna say that the absence of communication still sends a message, and I wanna ask you, what message do you think that teacher is getting? That teacher who is a veteran teacher, she's worked at Benell tirelessly for decades, she can work anywhere, and yet she sticks with us because we are her community. I want you to think about what message that sends to the new and prospective staff we're trying to recruit. How can we attract and retain staff when the building is literally falling apart around there? Most of all, again, I can't help but get emotional, most of all, I want to ask what message it sends to the kids. Many of whom, this is their safest place, Benell Elementary is their safest place, and it is in, like, horrible disrepair. What we need, I think, is communication and follow-through. I have to say that this isn't the first instance of lax communication coming from the school district. Last year, or the year, it may have been the year before, there was a busing issue that canceled schools for days. There was a fire at Bennington Elementary that also canceled schools for days. The school did issue informationless statements, they left parents and teachers in the dark about when school would resume or whether or not they needed childcare for the following day. I think there may have been some sight lost of how stressful that situation is, especially for our most vulnerable community members, people on the edges of employment, where missing a day of work could be the difference between them having a job and not having a job. The superintendent evaluation was a third example with very little communication. I learned about it through the grapevine, I attended one meeting via Zoom, only to have it go immediately to executive session. This was a missed opportunity, in my opinion. I wanted to hear what the superintendent was doing well, I wanted to be a partner, I wanted to hear about the workload and how challenging it is, I wanted to help. Yesterday, there was a very large meeting about public safety in Bennington, Mr. Colkeen was there, Ms. Boudreaux was there, so was I. The facilitator asked us, the audience, all of us, to communicate, to build trust with each other, to partner, and to hold one another accountable. We, parents, teachers, students, can be better partners with you, with the administration, if you trust us with the truth and you follow through. I would really like to ask that the board, or whoever does such things in this organization, issues an apology to the parent, well, mostly to the teachers of Bennington, whose classrooms have been in this condition for a year. They deserve that, they deserve a plan, they deserve the follow-through, because the roof is not the only thing that's busted, it's the relationships. We need to repair the relationships with our very hardworking, very dedicated teachers. That's what I came to say, thank you very much.
Anyone else have a comment, please?
My name is Julie Haupt, I worked in the SVU for 27 years as a speech-language pathologist, and I've worked in four of the six elementary schools, the shortest time in Woodford, sorry, but for quite a few years in each of the other buildings, and then I retired a year and a half ago. My kids went to Benell, I live in Bennington, I'm still very concerned about our local schools, I'm a member of Bennington Cares and our people here, so. I'm concerned that right now, two of the elementary schools in Bennington now have principals that will be on leave until June. Obviously, this is costly to the district and disruptive to the smooth running of these buildings, and my husband said what I'm about to say is so obvious, maybe I don't need to state it, but I just want to say that clearly Bennington Elementary and Molly Stark are the two schools with the highest needs, I think, in this district, and have the most complex structures, and what I'm talking about is that they have the biggest student bodies, they have the, they have low socioeconomic status, you know, on average, and they have special programs like early ed and ideals and NECC and childcare program at Molly Stark. So there's just a lot to remind us of in these buildings, and I know you're gonna have to be looking for applicants, and I just urge you to seek and eventually hire people to lead our schools who have experience, several years of experience, preferably as principals in schools that have, you know, this level of needs. I did recently meet with Ben Brownell at Benell, and I was really impressed, I, you know, he has plans that he's trying to put into place to improve the supports of students, seems like a, you know, really good candidate, so I hope whatever's in the power between you guys and the superintendent, I'm hoping that you encourage him to remain as the principal next year. I don't know what's gonna happen at Molly Stark, but we really can't afford to make a mistake of hiring people who, candidates that aren't prepared, you know, well-prepared to serve, you know, these schools. I feel like people come to Vermont, Bennington, and they just think it's a sweet little town, a college town, you know, they don't really know our issues. I mean, Ben explained to me that he grew up in Cambridge, and he felt like he kind of knew, and that's really helpful, too. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else have a comment? Okay, well, thank you very much. So moving on to the consent agenda, the consent agenda includes two rounds of minutes, notes of retirements and notes, resignations, nominations, as well as. Is it the will of the board to accept the consent agenda as published, or should we break elements of it out at all? I do know, Sandy, I know that you had some questions regarding the filter requests, maybe before we take up the business of the consent agenda, you can ask questions.
Yeah, I was, and I'm glad that I got to hear a little bit about it. I had thought last year, or I hoped last year, after, that they would be able to address the board to share their experiences, or at least to let us know what, if they received what they expected, if it was what you hoped it to be, so I'm glad to hear that you have that information.
As the, yeah, as the rep from Shatsbury, I certainly followed up with both teachers afterwards, and both were very complimentary, and then Jeff had a, yeah.
My daughter went, and she said, was, you know, she was happy, just happy she went, and the kids had good experiences. The only thing she wished to happen more is more kids went on a long hike, didn't like to do the long hike, they went on the short hikes, down the five-mile hike.
Got it.
But she said it's a great experience.
Thank you.
So they're very.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as published, please.
I make a motion to.
Okay, thanks, we'll still look at Jeff and Scott, any discussion on approving the consent agenda as published? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as published, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carries.
Just certainly.
Thank you. Director Gordon, could you explain what that is, since we have new members to board? That's where you started.
That is our warrant packet, which includes payroll warrants that have accumulated as well as the accounts payable warrant, so through the course of any given month, we may have to run a half-cycle warrant, so, you know, the past year, I've been reaching out to Chris and Scott, I get an email approval from them, but then when it comes time for the board to actually have a full board meeting, we encompass that with all of them together, because our auditors like to have a whole packet with all the board signatures on it.
Thank you.
So the board members can sign.
Yes. So the agenda are policies, so we have two policies to warn, which just in terms of procedure, we warn them, meaning we sort of accept them formally for consideration, and then they will come back around to us formally adopt. So we're warning two draft policies today. One is policy 4100, I'm sorry, 4100, which used to be the harassment of employees, but is being retitled Employee Unlawful Harassment. There are several modifications that are on there, as indicated by the strikeouts and the highlights. I would encourage us to warn this policy and for us all to consider it over the next month or so, and then come back for a more in-depth conversation. But for right now, I would entertain a motion to warn draft policy 4001, please. Thank you, Sandy. So we have a first and a second, any discussion on warning this policy for consideration? Hearing none, all those in favor of warning draft policy 4001, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes. That brings us to draft policy 5008, which is the policy regarding students' reports. This is, this is new to us, it is, it's one of our required policies, so again, we would take this under advisement for the next month or so, and then we come back to formally adopt it. So I'd entertain a motion to warn policy 5008, please. Thank you, Scott.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jeff. So we have a first and a second, any discussion about warning this draft policy? Hearing none, all those in favor of warning the draft policy 5008, signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, great, thank you. That brings us to agenda item six, which is finance. So Director Gordon, did you, can you take us through agenda item B, please, the adoption of the Community Bank Resolution?
Yes, so this is a document that is required when we're actually starting a new relationship with a new bank and/or new treasurer. So we had two scholarship accounts that the treasurer is moving from one banking institution that likes opening accounts at Community Bank. We currently don't have any accounts with Community Bank, so this resolution, which the board needs to adopt, but you can also waive the reading of the resolution, and that motion basically authorizes the treasurer and his assistant to open an account, to sign for the account, and to basically operate, conduct any banking business on behalf of the school district, which is his responsibility as the elected treasurer.
Correct, do you propose wording for a motion to authorize this?
Just, I would say waive the reading of the resolution and adopt it as presented.
So I would entertain a motion, please, to waive reading of the resolution, to adopt it as described, please. Have a second on that, please?
Second.
Thanks, Jeff. Any discussion on the motion on the floor?
Who is our treasurer right now?
Who's the treasurer? Ed Woods.
Ed Woods.
Ed Woods from the Bank of Bennington? He used to be the publisher of the Bennington banner. He works remotely now. He runs, publishes several newspapers.
So any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Any opposed? Any extensions? Right, motion passes. And I should note the treasurer's reports were, both for January and February, were attached to this amended agenda. Excuse me. And those are for consideration of the board as well. Although no formal action is required on the treasurer's reports. And then Director Gordon, could you talk to us a little bit about Ms. Warren's donation of $500, please?
So it's named Bruce Lerman. We've received a couple of them over the past few years. I think just as an investment, and to give back to the community, he donates $500. And it has been annually the past couple of years. We don't know if it's going to happen or continue. And it's just, it's given to the school to use as they see fit. So the school decided if the board will accept that, that they want to use it for positive behavior supports.
Great. So we do need a motion to accept the donation. So entertain that motion, please.
Motion to accept.
Thank you, Sandy. We have a second to accept this donation, please? Thank you, Glenn. So we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the donation, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? It passes, thank you. Which brings us to agenda item seven, the superintendent's report. Superintendent Culkin, the floor.
Welcome to the new board members. Congratulations to the re-elected and newly-elected offices of the board. Yesterday, I received a letter of resignation from Molly Stark principal, Dawn Basic, effective June 30th, 2023. This morning, I received confirmation that Principal Basic will be on medical leave effective immediately, which leaves the school without principals. This morning, I spoke with Vice Principal Terry Killory. I will be meeting with him tomorrow morning. And then I will be meeting with the administrative staff here to put some contingencies in together, together for something that has developed rapidly for us. And so we're responding as quickly as we can. And we'll be sending administrators, SBSU administrators, to conduct their office hours at Molly Stark, so that there is a second administrator, you know, in the building as much as possible until we have a more interim solution for the rest of this year. We will post and advertise immediately. And we'll tell everyone gathered here, you know, there are not a lot of people who want to be school principals. Currently have an opening at, as you mentioned, Bennington Elementary School. I believe as of today, there are three applicants for that position. And that's been advertised and posted on many, many different platforms. It's not unusual from last time we filled a position for principals in the past five years. I don't think I've ever seen anything more than a half a dozen principal applicants. There's not a lot of them. And it's a difficult position that not everyone wants to take. And also, you leave if you're a teacher. You leave, you leave and lose the protection of union membership once you do that. So that is a little unsettling for some candidates. But that is our current plan. Like I said, it's still moving because you, so you received the letter yesterday and then confirmation that medical leave for the rest of the year. I received that this morning. So we will put a plan together, and I will, once I have something more permanent, I'll let the board know. But looking for interim solutions. Anyone know any interim principals out there, retired principals that may want to? We certainly, it's a big school with a lot of challenges. So we did meet, we did a quick meeting this afternoon with some registrars here with some crisis planning. But there's so many people that may be impacted involved, I hesitate to say what that is tonight because some of the people that we're discussing that may be, that we may be shifting, haven't been notified. So I don't want people to be shocked by looking here. Next week's, no, tomorrow night's SBSU meeting has been postponed. There's a request of a lot of members because these meetings got pushed back because of last week's snowstorm, Ms. Warrenite. So if you got elected, you might not have known, or you didn't know you were going to be elected. So next week is a fifth Wednesday of the month, which means there is no meeting. So we're going to move the SU meeting to next Wednesday, which gives newly-elected members time to adjust their schedule if necessary. So we, the cancellation notice went out today, and we will re-warn the meeting for next Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week, with the same agenda, but just with the date. Again, give people time to adjust their calendar. I want to say something about public comment, right? Because you may say, I just want people to understand it. So it's not, you come, you get your comments, and when we don't respond, I don't want you to think that we're not hearing what you're saying. We certainly, I certainly am. But it's not public discussion. So I don't want you to take my non-response to your public comments to mean, but I am not listening. I am. So I am meeting next week with, with, whom am I meeting with? What is your organization? Bennington.
Bennington.
Okay, yeah. So that is next Wednesday, I believe, at 1:00, I think the meeting is. So looking forward to that meeting conversation. The conditions of the buildings is, and this board has heard me say it, is a great concern of mine. Our buildings are old. There's no mechanism in Vermont to fund the construction of public school buildings. It would come totally on the tax bill. You know, I, I used to, one thing that I'm extremely happy to hear is some of our Ezra funds that, you know, I have high hopes that Bennington Elementary School is going to get an elevator through the Ezra funds. And I struggle with something like that because am I really going to put an elevator in a building that that's old? Or what's the reality that I'm going to get to replace it? Because there is no, the state doesn't have a building construction fund to assist us. And my understanding, and this will change with Burlington getting a new high school, the last, from the ground up, completely constructed, brand-new school building in the state of Vermont is our middle school. And that's approaching 20 years, all nine years. There have been schools that have been rebuilt, had big additions put on, and Twin Valley being one of them. But it's a challenge for us. I walk, I walk Molly Stark, same thing, you know. So one, one thing that I did push the boards, and they, they did agree, thank you, and they funded a position for Director of Operations and Facilities because Renee was the Director of Operations and Facilities and the Budget Director, which was, when you have the number of buildings, school buildings that we have, it, it's just too much. And now, we have a professional engineer on staff who's a Director of Facilities and Operations, and her task for me is multi-year planning for these, so that we can go to budgets and address, you know, these buildings. I have a whole bucket list that I've met with Holly and about where I think priority should be on particularly our elementary schools. And I don't want to discount the problems at the high school, particularly like, you know, the bathrooms at the high school. I hear that from, from Principal Payne all the time. Our buildings are a challenge. And I've said, I think, what have you made? A comment about people come to Vermont and what they expect, right? They might have picked up on the accent, I'm not exactly from Vermont, right? But, so, I know, I know, I, I think this is my 11th year here, and I came here with a very good vision in my head of what, you know, Vermont was. And this is what I, how I describe where I work. It's about as urban as Vermont gets. And all the challenges and problems, even though it's a small town, they're here, and we need to, and then they come into our schools, and we see those challenges. So I hear you. It's often difficult to sit here and listen to that, but I appreciate it because we cannot improve without those ones. We cannot improve without that feedback. The challenges are many. But if anything I've heard from like the event we were at yesterday, there are all kinds of people who want to partner with us, to help us with this. And we are welcoming them. So if you feel that there are doors being shut, let me... Smart boy.
Okay, thanks, Superintendent Culkin. Are you able to speak to the process where the priority being placed on the one specific problem that was identified in the weakened classroom?
I'll be, I sent Holly a text from this meeting right now. Yeah. I had seen the buckets, and I remember being told that there was too much snow on the roof, couldn't actually do anything at this time about it. But I'll get an update on, on what that is. So, yeah. You know. I taught for 20 years. I taught in buildings that had buckets in the classroom. And there's, you know, it's not just water, you know, then, then, and I started concerned about mold issues and everything like that. So, yeah. So made a note, sent a message, get an update of, you know, where we are.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions for Superintendent?
Holly just started in the fall, right?
Yes.
And she do know all the buildings, I remember, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, so she's slowly probably making her way to every building.
Right.
And there's...
A lot of space.
There's a lot, yeah, there's Fisher Elementary, I don't know, 10?
Yeah, well, and, and operating school also, but we have 12.
12 buildings. Which...
Is there a way to have another person, another side vice? Me and has some...
Well, you do, you do have that structure. We have like, you have a facility director, I mean, you, you have, what's the title at Union Elementary?
He's a director of facilities.
Facility director. Arlington has a similar position. So each, each board has a director, but then the hall is now... So it's a, I mean, the amount of building here, the amount of buildings that we have, there's a, there's a lot of work to be done. But hopefully by budget season next year, the board will see, you know, where priority spending is on everything from flooring, ceilings, paint. She's doing a lot with lighting right now, which will make a big difference in some of, you know, Glenn, you were at, you were at, you were at Molly Stark. You were at Molly Stark. To me, you know, the cafeteria at Molly Stark, and Holly has heard me say this repeatedly, is not where I want to see young children eating lunch. It's dark. It's, it's a very dim space, but it's what we have. So we had a, and I don't see us getting into a school building anytime soon. So, because it would be, it would be totally funded by the taxpayers in the school district. The bond issue would be totally on them. You know, elementary schools are in the area of $100 million right now. High schools, well over $200 million.
All right, thank you. So that brings us to the eighth agenda item, which is the Chair's report. Chris, I just want to say, extend my thanks again for choosing me as Chair of the, of the board. And I want to welcome our two new board members. So you have Chrisel Nickel, we have Glenn Ferber, representing Bennington and Powell, respectively. And I, I think I warned you both, I'd like to sort of put you on the spot and just have you introduce yourselves. So Chrisel, do you mind starting, please?
Hi, I'm Chrisel Nickel. What kind of questions do you want me to?
I think whatever you think is important for us, do you mind, please?
I am a Bennington resident, and I have had several different experiences where I have had the luxury of coming into different schools within the district and interacting with the community, teachers, students. I'm glad that I got elected, and, yeah.
Okay. Did we have a question to comment?
Any questions, your comments, anything?
Thanks for, thanks for being part of things, for sure.
Thank you.
Good, well, I'm Glenn Ferber. I have the experience of working in this district for five years. I started as a substitute. I've been in every building in SSBU. I was a permanent sub at Molly Stark for a year, and then I moved to Bennington Elementary to be a behavior specialist. So I've made a lot of connections in the district. I think people view me pretty favorably. I treat everyone fairly. I now work for another supervisor union in Wyndham Southwest as a behavior specialist at Stanford School. I serve as the support professionals, union president over there. So I think I bring, I also am a business owner. I bring some practicality and finance experience in the schools and some dedication to the children of all of our schools. And that's it.
Well, thank you both for taking the time to run and put yourselves out there. Thanks so much. You know, it occurs to me, and it only just occurred to me while you were talking to Superintendent Culkin, back when this board was first formed, when the merger took place, we made it a point for all the board members to work in our buildings. Now that we have three board members who were not part of that process, maybe that's something we can make happen in the months to come, just so we're all, have the experience of seeing what the inside of our buildings look like. All of our school buildings, I'll say, I know we have other buildings as well. We took care of most of my other items beforehand. Just noting to anyone who might be watching on CAT TV or even WCAX, from, from what I understand, if you happen to live in Pownell and have an interest in serving on this board, we do have an opening that would be by appointment for the, for the term of one year. Last time we had this, we ended up with a board member with some great experience working in the schools, and then she ran and was elected again. So, so who knows what, what the future might hold for you if you decide to put yourself out there and serve on this board. But with that, just, you know, thanks as always to our, our teachers and staff for the work they're doing in our school buildings. So that brings us to agenda item nine, the Principal's report. Do we have a principal on, you know, back first tonight?
Right. We'll have to connect the board organization.
Yep. No, and that makes sense. So there are some agenda items under 10 for FYI. There's the budget status report, the student enrollment numbers, which were attached to the agenda as well. Which brings us to our final agenda item, which is executive session. So just as a matter of process for our board members, we need to take a vote in open session to enter into executive session, and then we need to come back and then take a vote to exit executive session. I will say that I'm anticipating no action to be taken after we leave executive session. So if anyone who doesn't feel like sticking around till afterward, you're not going to miss anything, I don't think. Thanks again to the folks who, who came today. Thank you very much. So with that, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session, please, inviting Superintendent Culkin and either Director Phipps or Director Gordon, if there's a reason to draw.
Nick Gault is on, is joining us, so.
Perfect. Then we would invite Director Gault then as well.
It is, yes.
And it's, you're going to stop here, right? So I'll close these.
Yes, please.
Thank you. So we have, so I would entertain that motion to enter into executive session, inviting the superintendent and Director Gault, please. The motion, yes. Jeff, Glenn? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all of us in favor of entering executive session.
CAT TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support CAT TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.